Let's start, let's stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Flags in the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody, beautiful day. I'll do roll call. Chris, are you here?
Yes, sir.
How about Christie?
Here.
Artie, I'm here.
Mark, here.
Maureen.
Here.
John.
Here.
And Cindy Valentine's absent excuse. Uh, next thing on the agenda is our bills payable, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion.
You can pick your mic up if you want. Or can they hear, can everyone hear him?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to motion to approve bills payable in the amount of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. However, in reviewing the Fund 209, the Oakland Cemetery Fund, it appears that our water purchase that usually comes through the city of Elginak was put in the wrong box. So, the amount is sixty thousand, eight fifty-nine, forty-nine, I think it just needs to be recoded. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
That's good.
That's my motion.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion?
I wanted to ask about the wastewater treatment authority. They spent about a thousand dollars in lawyer fees. Did they come up with anything when they looked through the paperwork? Or did, I see it was analyzing documents.
Yeah, they, they, they.
They approved everything?
They approved it, all the contracts as presented.
And then, on the uniform t-shirts from Scoreboard and more, who were those for?
Which line is that? Which?
Uh, that's on Fun Fire Department. So, it's like, how many t-shirts and, you know? You know, chief, on the t-shirts, we spent like eighty-four bucks, you know?
Yeah, we bought t-shirts for the, for the men and women of the department during Rafton, and it was kind of, so everybody matched, and it was kind of a morality.
Oh, great. And then, in the police department, there's twenty-nine dollars for field gear for Thompson. I don't think we have a police chief here.
No.
Must be something small, huh?
Probably uniform allowance is it coded under?
It is.
It says field gear, yeah.
Uniform allowance.
Yeah, alright. I just wondered, you know, since last time we brought that suit, I'm kind of just trying to keep an eye on that stuff.
Okay.
No, you know, that's not a suit.
No, not for twenty-five dollars.
Okay, any more discussion on bills payable?
The sewer department on Harson's Island here, we spent three hundred and twelve dollars on legal fees. You know what we did there? If that's for the algae water treatment plant, that's what we're asking.
If you remember, you gave me the authority to do closing documents, and I had the closing costs on there.
Oh, that's what it is, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on bills payable? Hearing none, roll call. Chris?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Mark, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, next is our supervisor's report. Oh, I've been working the last two weeks with our audit. We had three auditors in-house going over all our records. And, uh, thank God they're gone. Nah, it's, it's good to have them in. Working a lot with blade issues, building issues, had a few meetings with potential investors in Clay. Been doing a lot of work on our revising our water ordinance, our waterline extension on Columbine, the Pearl Beach Pier project, outdoor school classroom project, and dealing with several issues with Eagle. Uh, we actually have a draft language for a bill at the state of Michigan to allow a second DDA, which would allow us to do one on Harson's Island, mainly the San Souci area. And Senator Hertel is going to, I hope, present it on the floor this week, if not, it'll be next week. Uh, it was reviewed by our planner, and I forwarded to the Michigan Township Association and MML for their support, which we did receive. And, uh, so, um, once that's presented and going, we're gonna see what we can do about getting a DDA here for San Souci. Also, I requested the, our planner, and to take it to the Plant Clay Planning Commission to look at doing overlay zoning adjustment for a San Souci, for a San Souci district, and basically to preserve the character and charm of the downtown area and the history. So hopefully, that will be before the planning commission soon. Fun thing going on today, HG, HGTV is in Clay Township today filming their House Hunters show. And I was working with them, points of interest for them to go see, and I did mention if they're sportsmans, the preserve on the island, and I'm not sure, I know they contacted them, I'm not sure if they made it over there today or not, but it was their bee crew, they call it, doing film shots around the township today. They said it'll typically air between six and nine months from filming, so we got a little bit timed away before we'll see it on, on TV. Our Detroit Lions bus trip was sold out, anybody go on that? I know Kathy Harris did. Um, they had a great time, too bad we lost, but heck, it was fun, good game. Our sturgeon festival is this coming Saturday, September twenty-third, family activities start around noon to five o'clock. The Gobies, we have the Beer Tent, and the Gobies play from seven to eleven. The fishing tournament starts Saturday night at eight o'clock at night and goes till Sunday morning at eight AM. We're gonna have a fish tank, so you can come pet a sturgeon, and all kinds of good stuff going on for the kids, so that's always fun. I know Chantel will be there painting faces for everybody, she's, she's, she's very popular. Our Journey cover band from Infinity and Beyond will be at our Clay Township Park October twenty-first from six to nine. And Clay Township Hunter Safety Class, it's a free class they offer every year, is this year October seventeenth through the nineteenth from four o'clock in the afternoon after school to eight PM. And, you know, we have them there so long, they do, give food provided, dinner provided. I know we allot for like fifty kids, where are we at now? It's.
Thirty-four have already signed up.
Thirty-four already signed up, so it'll be filled here pretty quick.
Where's that?
At the police station. Let's see, this past weekend, we had the bump and run event over in Elginak, that was, that was a great event, actually, it's fun. They do, Friday, oh, Saturday night, they did a lawnmower race, and it was quite well attended, and then yesterday, they basically have a demolition derby. Uh, Saturday, fireworks, and, uh, there's all kinds of stuff going, actually, it went through on Thursday to Sunday. It was a good event, the Lions helped out, the Elgin Lions, right?
Absolutely, yep.
And I know the Harson's Island Association did their barbecue Saturday, and we did our last music in the park Saturday. I was like triple booked, I couldn't make that, so I hope that went well. I haven't heard, so. That's all I have, my supervisor's report. Right now, we have public comments, I do have a mic up here, any public comments?
Can you hear me?
No, we have a mic here.
I just have a question, I don't even, it's, it's actually, I was wondering if there's any funding left in the recreational budget to possibly put on another fall Dancing in the Streets that we had like last year?
Uh, it all hinges on, on sponsorship.
Well, get us some sponsors there, Artie, work on that.
Good luck.
Hi, Patty Bane, seven fifty-seven North Channel. I just had a question for you, Artie, regarding the DDA. Can you explain, because we had approached you a couple of years ago about that, and you said because of the, it was, it needed to be like a continuous downtown, and because of the water, that we would never be able to have a DDA, so what's changed?
Well, we're gonna change the law.
Okay.
That's what's changing.
Okay, how does that, can you tell me how a DDA works, just in like a thirty-second? Where does the funding come from?
Well, what it does, it, it sets a bar when you form it, when you form it, and then it captures any tax increases in the DDA district. And it'll capture those from going to like the county, and that it has to be spent in the district, it can't be spent anywhere else. And it's basically to improve infrastructure, improve the tax base, or, or make it more friendly for, for businesses in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Any more public comments?
Mark Rocha of seven thirty-nine North Channel. You know, Artie, we keep coming back here week after week and bringing up things that we question, and we're always told that we need to come to your office, and you'll discuss it with us and tell us about it at that time. I was unable to attend the last month's meeting, but I watched the video, and I saw a couple things come back up again, one being the five hundred dollar suit or thereof, and the deductible paid out to Ms. Valentine for a deductible. Some of us can't get there during the hours that you have, you're closed on lunchtime, so we can't even come on our lunchtime to come into your office. And how many people do you want to come to your office on a given day so you can discuss this, and then it gets misinterpreted? Every time somebody tells a story, it may not be what you actually said, they put their own twist on it. I just think it's a better use of time that people come with the same question week after week, that at a township meeting, you just address it, say at one time, we all know what you said, and be done with it. It just keeps coming up. We don't have any answers, you don't have to answer them here, I don't have the time to come to the township to ask you in person about these questions. I just think it's a better use of the time. I want to thank you for coming here today to the island, so we didn't have to spend another ferry ticket. Hopefully, you know, we don't get a bill for you guys, because you came across on the ferry, and next month, we'll see it on the bills payable, that we ended up paying for it anyways. And, you know, you just, you just gotta remember, you work for us, we pay them, so don't lose track of who, who you work for. Thank you.
Can I address that, if I, if I may?
Sure.
These meetings are for business meetings, for us to come, to conduct township business. It's not, they're, they're not town hall meetings, they're not question and answers, but you can make public comments, which, which we do, and you do. If it's a quick, easy answer, I know it, I'll answer it. But there's some of these questions that we don't have the answer in front of us, so if you've sent us an email or come into the office, it's a lot easier to, to address it. That's what we're saying.
But that's what I'm saying, these questions come up week after week, you have the time to get the answers to us, and right here, you could tell seventy-five people one answer, and it doesn't get misunderstood, misinterpreted, a swing put on it, or anything else like that, and that's how it always is. I can't get there during, open at lunchtime. Who closes their whole office between twelve and one when people take lunch, and we have an opportunity to come there? Nobody!
Send, send an email, like I said, send an email.
It's, it's still one at a time, one at a time, tell us all.
Okay, well, we don't have the answers.
Ask them the question.
Yeah, I don't have a question.
Ask them the question, make them answer it.
What about the five hundred dollar suit and the deductible that we paid to Valentine?
I believe the suit was two hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Why did we pay for that?
It was out of his uniform allowance, which every officer gets, and the, the police approves it, as part of his uniform, he has to go to court.
So we have to buy a suit for him to go to court?
We got, as part of his uniform.
He can use that during his daily routine?
As part of his, his uniform allowance. And the other part of his uniform allowance was to buy a stainless steel knife, which he carries, part of their, their uniform, which he carries with them, and primarily, if you drive a car in the river, or in a canal, and you're stuck, he has a knife to cut your seatbelt off to get you out.
Okay, can you address the deductible that we paid?
I don't have the answer for that, no, I don't.
Well, that was real easy answer for the suit.
Well, Christie just said it wasn't a deductible.
Well, that's how it's always been addressed, why wouldn't we correct it when we brought it up as a deductible?
I, I don't have a, send me an email.
I know that Cindy did respond with an email to someone who emailed and asked about that.
Okay, Boydell Highway, Harson's Island. I'm just gonna say the exact same thing that that gentleman said, I'm gonna say back in August, issues that have been brought up, and we never hear anything about it. I understand that you're here to conduct business, but where do we get our answers from? And I'm not coming to your office, and I'm not sending an email, because to that man's effect.
You can call me, then.
We should all know, but why, where's the?
What's the question?
Where's a meeting that we have that we can get our answers to our questions?
Well, like I say, these are board meetings for conducting business, they're not town hall meetings.
I understand that.
Schedule a town hall.
Maybe we can schedule a town hall.
Maybe we should schedule a town hall.
I had one, I had one last month here for the wastewater treatment.
And look at how many people came to that meeting to understand, but we weren't allowed to talk, it was just a town hall, you said that decisions had already been made on that, so.
I beg to differ.
There was no discussion, so we asked a lot of questions, though. I mean, so, but my point is, about back in August, a husband and wife were up and mentioned that there was a lot of digging going on, they were digging by their home outside of the hours. I mean, they were so passionate about their issues, that the board just sits there and looks, you know what I mean, and then you never hear any follow-up on it.
I, I actually communicated with them about three, four times in the past two weeks in one way or another. It was between the township and them.
Okay, fine, how about the man with the fishing pier that claimed the garbage was overflowing? You know what I mean? I think we all just want to know that these things are being addressed.
The fishing pier issue was addressed.
Thank you.
Yep.
And again, this is not a knock, I, I've been a board member, I know it's a thankless job, I get all that, I appreciate the police and the fire department as well, it's just, I think we're all concerned about what's going on, and how our taxes are getting handled, I mean, yeah.
Sounds good, thank you. Any other public comments?
Chris Holton, twelve oh two Ford Drive. I just wanted to mention a couple upcoming events here on the island. The Lionses are having their crap show on October the eighth, and San Souci, not, I'm sorry, SS Downtown Inc. is having their first annual chili cook-off right here in the Lions Hall on October fourteenth. Applications are available through the Brian through Patty, or on our website, and there's information on Harson's Island, Harson's Island, Kefanings, uh, next door, and SS Downtown Inc.'s website, Facebook page, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I want to talk about the water board, the South Water Authority, I think it's on the agenda again, this, this meeting. I wasn't even on the radar, I didn't even notice this thing was happening until all the discussion at the last board meeting. It didn't seem like anybody really knew all the details of what was going on, so I started looking into it, and I, and I don't like it at all. There's a lot of things in there that are so ambiguous, that gives this authority total control over the water in the sewer for the three, Elginak, Clay, and Ira, total control. They don't answer to anybody but the board themselves, there is no oversight on them. You give them carte blanche on their own salary, they shell serve at a reasonable compensation that they establish. You know how that worked, how I feel about that work for this board? Not, not too good. There's another thing that they did, they give eminent domain. Who gives eminent domain to a non-elected government body? I don't know anybody that does that. But you give them, in this board, in this authority, eminent domain over property that they deem they need to operate, I don't think that's good. I tried to get a whole bunch of FOI stuff, because this stuff comes up, you know, and a knock on the FOI a little bit. You file an FOI, here, here's what happens, here's the, my standpoint, I tried to do my research on this. The agenda for the board meeting comes out on Friday, closed on Friday. All weekend long, Saturday, Sunday, obviously, everybody's closed. The meeting's held on Monday. It takes five days on a normal to respond to an FOI request. Every single one I submit, even though we have two people that are supposed to do FOIs, and they get paid extra to do it, asks for another ten-day extension. So that puts it fifteen days, so it's past the next board meeting, I can't even get the data to contradict, or to study anything that you're gonna vote on, because it's past the next board meeting, so, that, that's really kind of not a good way for transparency in my, my mind. There's a, there's a letter, in fact, one of the things that was in the supervisor's report on March the seventh, twenty twenty-two, was something that caught my eye as I was studying this thing. It says that St. Clair County PPW said that the wastewater treatment plant is operating, has not been operating better, and that is a true statement on that line. But the other ten paragraphs or so in that document state otherwise. They go on and on and on to state all the things that it says is not operating good. Hold on a second, I gotta get to that page, sorry. It says, "serious issues regarding the inflow, infiltration, inflow from the community's collection systems at the risk, flows exceed in design capacities, resulting in ever-increasing levels of sanitary sewer overflows, increased maintenance plan cost because everything's operated at a hundred percent or more, shortening the lifespan of equipment which can turn clause beach closures, ego fines, and while sewage going to the discharge in the river." There's things on here about fines. Section's two point two of the agreement says that can impose fines. Overflows are done on a daily basis, flow rates are on a daily basis. It's billed and reported on a quarterly basis, but the fine schedule says that the board can impose fines on an annual basis. So it's averaged for three hundred and sixty-five days, if they didn't go over, there are no fines. But if they do impose fines, the board has the authority to override and to waive those fines. That seems kind of silly. So, um, there's all kinds of things here, budget control, they have total control over it, like I said before, they establish their own pay, they can take out bonds, they can set reasonable rates, whatever they decide. Eminent domain, which blows me away, and if, for some reason, you try to withdraw from it later on, you don't like it, they keep everything that you paid into, all the equipment, everything. You don't get it back, so, um, there's all kinds of stuff here. I just think that when you say, when you said, "everything's running good," and it says right in the document that you put for the water, and it's right in there, "everything's running good, no fines, no violations." It took about two hours of internet searches to find multiple ego violations, multiple complaints, there's no, there's no disposition on them, but they're all there, and they're easy to see, so, this thing is, right now, it's, it runs over capacity regularly. It does, look at the flow rates, they're over capacity regularly, daily. Now, when you average it quarterly, probably not.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? That's a false statement.
Okay, alright, alright.
Just so, I don't want that thrown out there, and people take that as fact, that's a false statement.
You're saying.
We were a million gallons, a million gallons a day under for the last quarter.
Alright, you're saying that I will not find a day on the flow rate that you're not over.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
That's not what I said.
Alright.
You said that we're over capacity flow on a daily basis.
Not every day. I didn't say every day. If it was every day, Christ, the thing would break. No, I didn't say every day.
I think you could go to just about any sewage treatment plant in southeast Michigan on a rain event day and find that, what you're accusing this plant of having an issue with.
I don't care, I only care about here.
I understand that.
I don't care what anybody else is dealing with. I'm here talking about here, what I got to do.
What you said was not accurate.
Okay.
Very misleading.
I'm misleading, alright.
Very misleading.
I didn't think so.
On the daily thing, yeah.
Well, it's not over every day.
Yeah.
But it is over on some days, how's that? The, the whole reason this whole thing is happening is because there's supposed to be an agreement years ago, and you guys have been working on it for a while, I know it, I, I wasn't really paying attention to it, but the county finally said, hey, look, we want a five-year plan, you guys know about the five-year plan. They want a five-year plan, when the three communities got together, everybody agreed, and they scrapped the five-year plan.
John, you want a?
Another misleading statement, totally false.
Okay.
And I'll tell you what, I was there, and that gentleman right there is still there, and he'll verify that exactly what you're saying is totally false.
Okay, then, then they're saying.
I put many documents on the tables, and we're gonna go over it when we go to vote, so.
I would hope so.
But I put one set on each table for you to read.
Okay, this is public comments.
I'm over, huh?
No. If you want, keep going, I'll let.
No, all I, all I'm, all I'm saying is, I think this needs an outside consultant to look at to make sure we're doing the right.
Oh, we've had them.
Okay, no, I didn't see any public hearings or meetings or anything where we could come in and talk to them, so if there was, my bad, I missed it, but if there isn't, I'd like to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Chris Hilton in seven three four zero Flamingo. I also run water treatment plants, this is what I do, is I run water treatment plants, wastewater plants. Very familiar with the situation, a lot of the information that was just stated to you was not stated correctly or, or false. This authority that is being formed is formed from the three communities, that's Clay Township, Ira Township, and Elginak. I work for Ira Township, I'm the DPS superintendent there. I've been involved in every single one of the meetings that's been put together to develop this authority, so the authority is being formed because the county decided they wanted to back out. There is a letter circulated, everybody saw it, I think this board got it back in twenty twenty-two, that stated that because of infiltration and overflows, the county does not want to deal with that liability anymore. And they don't, and no community wants to deal with it either. The facts are, though, that this authority, or the county has been dealing with that, I have newspaper articles from the eighties that are stating the same thing that we're saying now, that we have infiltration, we have overflows, it's causing that plant to be stressed out, and it is, because those daily events, like, we had an event twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of August that caused that plant to stress, it caused our sewer systems to stress. The sewer systems weren't designed to take in all this rainwater. Inflow infiltration, people have their sump pumps hooked up to it, they have yard drains hooked up to it, storm, or roof drains hooked up to it. The sewer treatment system is there to treat your sewage, stuff you flush down the toilet, take showers, that's what it's there to treat. Because of the inflow and infiltration, that plant gets maxed out. The county has known it, and, no, not to the county, because they were running that plant, so the way it works, the county was running the plant for Clay Township, Ira Township, and the city of Elginak. They were the middlemen, that's what they were, they, they were just the middleman, they would pay the bills, they had the operators that ran that plant, but the plant was essentially owned by the three communities. So what's happened now is the, the county has relinquished that plant to the three communities. So the three communities are developing the board. The board is not a paid board, that is completely false, what you said, nobody's getting paid to be on that board. There is a statement in there that says compensation can be had, because one of the things that the board's gotta do, they have to, now they have to have someone to take care of bills, take care of things like that, and nobody's gonna run that part of the business for free. If they are, and you're in this room. If they are, and you're in this room, I'm telling you, the authority would love it. They will take that. We'll have somebody run it for free. Nobody's going to do that. So there is language in there. That language is being pulled and used, it's not being used appropriately. That's not the way it was meant to be. And it's not even the way it's written in there, if you didn't read the contract. So the authority is built by members of the community. It's whoever this board appoints to be the liaison for this community. It's not just somebody that gets paid or any random person. The authority is not an outside entity. It's you guys. It's this community. It's Ira Township, it's Elgin. That's who's going to be running the authority. Not, it's not a third party. It's not somebody coming in from the outside to run your community. It's people within your community that care. I live in, I live in Clay Township, I work for Ira Township, I've been involved in this since day one. I will leave my phone number for any one of you that are in here. Anybody you know, if you want to call me, if you want to come meet with me, I'll explain to you all the documents that you're going to see. A lot of the documents that you're going to see were, they were cherry-picked some information. Not all the information's on there. Not all the information from all the meetings are on there. There's information on there, and it's all been FOIA, it's all true. But I think everybody understands that, taken out of context, you can make anything sound like what you want it to sound like. This authority is being put in place, and I just talked to the superintendent of the wastewater plant today, and he is excited that this authority is being put together because now there's going to be commitment from the groups that are in there to improve things. The plant, in shape, beautiful. You would never know that that's a wastewater plant when you walked in there. Those guys have done a great job keeping it clean, operating great. It really is operating good. It just can't handle the inflow, the added water when it rains. When we had high water, that's when all of this came about. Everybody in this room that lives on the island understands high water. Your septic's weren't working. Everything on the mainland, when water was coming into that sewer system, just overwhelmed that plant. They want it to run correctly. They want it to run correctly. I want it to run correctly because I get called in the middle of the night if it doesn't, we got to go out fixing. So everybody's trying to get to the right point of running it, but we all understand that things take, cost money, too. So when things are getting repaired, there are costs to it. So, you know, everybody wants to have the lowest utility bills possible, but they also want everything to be perfect. So unfortunately, you know, in order to fix those things, revenue's going to have to be generated. The bills aren't going to go up, I can tell you that. There was a rate study done by a third party, somebody mentioned third party. There was a third-party rate study done. It shows that the revenue coming in currently, that the residents pay, a lot of you guys don't pay it, so we're talking about things that you're not using, but the revenue that's coming in currently will cover the costs for the way the plant's operated. When it comes time to do other things, to upgrade and improve, there are additional costs that, but there's grant money out there that's being looked after, there's congressional spending that's being looked after. Every community is working on it, I can tell you that right now. Each community went through a process called the SAW grant. It was a million-dollar grant. Clay Township got it, Ira Township got it, and the City of Elgin got it. That was to look at their wastewater system and look for problems. We knew we had problems. It wasn't if there's problems, it's where are they? So there was a million-dollar grant for each community. They just finished, I think Clay Township finished theirs up a couple of years ago, and Ira Township, we finished others up about five years ago. The results of those studies showed us where the problems were. So now that we know where the problems are, I can tell you in Ira Township, because I'm currently looking for funding to fix those problems, I have $3.3 million for the problems to fix. If I came and knocked on everybody's door and said, "Hey, want to kick in a little money for this?" Nobody wants to do that. So we're looking for grant money that we can get, or some sort of low-interest loans, and spread that out. So what that's going to do is that'll help us fix our system. Clay Township's going to be doing the same thing. I know I saw some paperwork going out there. They're looking for some SRF, DWSRF, it's money that the state loans, low-interest rates. So then I know the township's looking for that as well. Elgin just wrapped up their SAW grant, doing the same thing. Everybody has infiltration. I know somebody stated they didn't care about everybody else. The whole state is dealing with this. Everybody hears the word infrastructure, they hear how poor infrastructure is. It's because nobody sees it until it's in your basement, or it's in your toilet, or it's coming out of your bathtub. So again, I think there's a lot of misinformation about the authority and what its purpose is. It's the community, it's people within the community. I am more than willing to talk to you about it at any point, anytime, to discuss it, tell you what's been happening at the authority, or how it's, you know, where the progress is. Right now, I know there's an agenda item for the board to vote on. I can tell you, Ira Township passed theirs last Thursday. Tomorrow, it's going to be on the Elgin board. There's fines and penalty information in there that you'll see. There was some things that brought up, I think Mr. Kraft brought it up, was talking about studies. There have been plenty of studies. We have outside counsel looking at that. I think you mentioned a recommendation from the county to develop a five-year plan to reduce INI. Their five-year plan, I'm going to tell you, was so aggressive, we gave it to our attorney, we gave it to our engineer, outside counsel, so they can look at it, because we don't have all the answers. We know what the boots-on-the-ground stuff looks like. So we gave it to them because they look at contracts. They looked at the contracts, and they told us, "If you sign that, you are out of your mind." So we said, "All right, we're not going to sign that contract with the county because it's horrible for our citizens." It basically said that we would reduce our infiltration to a point where there's very little infiltration. What that would do is it would put all the burden on the taxpayers. And I'm not saying taxpayers, it'd be rate users, because taxpayers aren't paying for it. It's the rate users. It's an enterprise fund. The people that pay for it are the people that use it. So if we had to reduce INI to zero right now, you're talking multi-million dollars. So we would never sign a contract with the county to put a burden on our taxpayers that was insane. So we said, "No, we need to sit down and we need to look at that and see what makes sense." They took that and said, "Okay, you guys don't want to help us out? Here's your letter, we quit." Oh, crap. So here we are, literally, crap. Here we are, we have to deal with this now as the communities. So the authority is what was going to be formed, and that's where we are. They wanted us to have that authority, because you'll see in documents, they wanted that authority done in August. They gave us, I think in February, they said, "We need that done by August."
Of 2022, right?
In 2022.
22. We said, "No way."
So in 2022, we looked at it and said, "That's irresponsible, in my opinion, again. I've been doing this my whole career." In my opinion, it's irresponsible to think that you're going to form an authority and have everything in place in six months. So we kept putting them off, putting them off. And when I say putting them off, we continually worked on this for 18 months. I mean, it wasn't a month went by, there was not a meeting to discuss this authority. So this has been constantly worked on, constant. We've gotten it, we're out 18 months, there have been, I can't tell you how many redline copies we've read, how many different versions, and it's been brought down to these documents that, I'm not sure, I don't think everybody's seen them, but I know the board hasn't. It's been brought down to these documents. There have been one firm of attorneys that work for the entire authority, which each community pays. I know that you guys see the bills from that. And each community has their attorney look at it. So this has been looked at by multiple attorneys, multiple engineers from each community have looked at it, and we're to the point now where this is the best thing for our community. It's not the best thing for a board member, it's not the best thing for a superintendent. It's the best, it's the best thing for the community. Is it perfect? Probably not. Can we amend it and work on it? We sure can, because guess what? We are part of that authority now. You have, you have word, you have voice now, you have the ability to change that. Before, when the county ran it, they sent us a bill. And that's what we had. We had a bill. We paid the bill. And then they would come and say, "Hey, you're taxing our plant, you're going to get another bill." So again, I don't want to stand up here and keep talking, but I see a lot of this information, and it bugs me because this is what I do. I mean, this is what I do day in and day out. I wake up at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning because of these issues. And I just want everybody to understand that we care about what's going on. Really, on my point, I care about what's going on, I care about the authority, I care about information given to you guys. I will give, again, I'll give my phone number to everybody.
Who's your counterpart at Clay?
Who's what?
Who's your counterpart?
Who's my counterpart at Clay? Who knows what I do at Clay?
Yeah.
Lance is in deposition now. So again, I'm more than willing to answer questions. I just don't want information to be just little pieces that kind of get people upset, because it's not fair to you guys to only get a little bit of the information. You should have all the information. But I'm telling you, the only way to get all the information is either call a guy like me, or sit in a meeting with me every single time I go. I mean, honest to God, that's really the only way to get it. So I'll answer questions. I don't want to get...
Maybe I'm missing something, but I'm looking at the articles incorporation for the authority.
Yep.
And there's a designated thing here for compensation.
So again, I'll go back to that compensation, because I don't want you hung up on. We can talk after if you want, but the compensation was put in place because if there is a job description that has to be put in place, there is no compensation for board members. I can tell you, there is no compensation.
Well, it clearly states Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, and Secretary, May...
The word is May.
So it's possible. You're saying they don't get paid.
No.
So down the line, they could get paid.
But I did tell you, it's possible. Right? Because I said, if there's a position that opens up where they need to do clerical work, it's possible. May, you just used the word may, not it will be, may.
Well, that may...
So there's not, again...
It doesn't say that.
We're going to get lost in a week, we go out.
Yeah.
There's not a...
Is this not, like, public forum? This isn't Q and A, right?
Correct. So I won't, I won't make my public comment.
Can we get your name and phone number?
Can we get your name and phone number?
Yep, I'll be sitting right there, and if you come up to me, I'll give you my name and phone number. Hey, I'll get you right now. My name is Chris. Call me anytime before midnight.
Chris, my name is Chris, 5174. This was actually already completely inappropriate. This went, like, to Q and A.
It did.
I appreciated it very much.
No, no, no. But there was some good information, but already we need to control the meeting a little bit.
Well, I'm trying to. So any other...
Trying to, actually, did you...
Well, it needed to be said. Is there any more public comments?
Or how it should be said.
Is there more, any more public comments?
Chris, hi there. Use Reeder, I E. Use Lloyd, I A. Six. 5174.
I acknowledge you're a lovely man. This wastewater treatment plant, I brought this up a year and a half ago, and, you know, at the last meeting, Artis says, "Oh, the county just wanted to get out of the business." Well, that's not entirely true. The letter very clearly states that there was a verbal agreement between the three entities, and that when it got put down in writing, that the mitigation plan, the five-year mitigation plan, was eliminated, and the reason for them not saying that they wouldn't continue to support us was that they determined that it couldn't allow us, they felt that by eliminating that clause, that there was a lack of commitment by us for that, this effort. And they also said that they no longer wanted to be exposed to these issues and potential liabilities. So there's more to the story, and it's not transparent what the board is saying and what's really been written.
Okay, thank you. I think that Chris addressed that. It was a bad deal for all of us if we did sign that agreement. Any more public comments? Okay, here are none. Moving right along to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Board, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from Board Meeting 95 of 23. The Board approved reports, the in-between meeting checks, the EFTs, and the requests from Garaga of the Code Enforcement Planning and Zoning Retreat for 415 plus lodging.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on anything?
I just have one correction. The, on the minutes, I did not approve the payroll. I said nay, but it went by so fast, I don't think Cindy caught it. So I just need to...
On payroll?
For August payroll, so...
In the minutes?
In the minutes. Yeah, in the minutes, it says there was a motion for bills payable...
Oh, bills payable.
By Chris, and was supported by John, and we all said a, and I said nay.
Okay. That's not payroll, that's bills payable.
Bills payable. Well, payroll was included in that bills payable. And that was what I...
A.
Well, I don't know. I guess it's, no, it's in the consent agenda, excuse me. It's in the consent agenda, the motion carries on the payroll August of 23.
So you should be shown as a nay in the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, I'm sorry. Yeah, I said the wrong thing. So the consent agenda would be...
We can have that amended.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor of the consent agenda with said amendment? In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next is the fire chief report. Got a mic over there, chief, you want to grab it?
Hi. Good to talk to you.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. Chief's report for August 2023. During the month of August, I attended three meetings. One was the St. Clair Flats Association, one was the St. Clair Chiefs Association. We discussed about encrypting our fire department radios, and one teleconference with the Coast Guard going over the raft-off event for 2023. During the, excuse me, during August, we also responded to three medical calls at the raft-off event, which turned out to be less than last year. Attendance was very high this year compared to last year. More activity, there were three float planes, a couple helicopters flying around, and lots of boats out there this year. I would like to thank the men and women of my department for their service that day, and also Clay Township Dispatch for their hard work. Also, Mr. Chartier for allowing us to use his property for staging of the event. The fire department also did a static display at Brown's Field this, in August. Uh, we handed out hats, backpacks, coloring books, drinking bottles, and at the end of the day, we let the kids down, uh, down wet. So, uh, also, uh, we assisted in the backpack giveaway. We did a fire truck display. Uh, we also passed out hats, coloring books, and stickers, and gave a tour of our fire trucks.
Hey, how'd the pump testing go today?
Uh, we got eight trucks done.
Okay, good.
So got a couple more to do tomorrow and we'll be all done.
And the island's been staffed pretty much hundred percent the last six months?
Yes.
Or more so? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. New business. Thanks, chief. Uh, first is our Southwater Municipal Water Authority.
How do you want to handle this? Want to go one at a time, or do you want to go as a group?
Doesn't matter to me.
What's the board's pleasure?
We could try it once, and if, if we run into a problem, we could go one at a time.
I'd rather do one at a time.
Okay. Let's do one at a time.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the Southwater Municipal Water Authority, uh, twenty-twenty-three dash zero-eight point three-zero, the draft agreement, and articles of incorporation.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Well, you know, we have a ton of discussion. Does anybody else want to go first?
Well, I would prefer that with this, with the, uh, with the five, actually six items on there.
Can't hear you.
I would prefer that, uh, not only that, the front, the first item, but the sixth item itself, we had a, a person of authority, and I appreciate Chris coming in and, uh, and, and making the statements on this thing that he did. And, uh, again, I agree with that, but I would like to have somebody that drew this draft up, a legal person, and go over each item with us, so we understand exactly what it is. Because I've read it, and like anybody else out there, uh, I had a lot of questions with it. I'm sure Maureen's going to take over from here.
Well, I, I did ask last meeting if we wanted an attorney present, and everybody said, no, we don't need one, if I remember right. So I didn't bring in an attorney that, that reviewed these, but.
I think I said yes.
Is it possible to have a town hall with a lawyer present at a meeting and explanation? I do appreciate the gentleman that spoke, um, the authority. I'm not quite sure you're saying it's citizens that are the authority, and I'm like, well, what are their responsibilities really? And where do they get their knowledge or background on this kind of important matter? So I think it'd be great if we could have a town hall to go over everything with the people, with an attorney, and make it very clear. And this is what we're doing, this is what we're paying for.
Does anybody else on the board have, uh, anything else right now?
I just want to talk about the documents that I've uncovered, that I put on the tables, and ask the rest of the board if they, you know, if I'm the only one that sees concern with these things. And, you know, I kind of have to take them one, one of my emails at a time, because I can't jump all around.
Can, can I cut you off for a little bit?
Go ahead.
Maureen?
Yeah, as long as I can pick it up later.
I want to give you a little bit of history.
No.
On, on our wastewater treatment plant, uh, and this won't take that long. I think it was back in two thousand seventeen. I mean, back then, we were running at fifty percent, sixty percent capacity. Uh, the first issue that came up was the Pearl Beach lift station needed to be rebuilt.
But can I interrupt you, Artie? We're not in dispute about we're not requiring it. We were informed about exactly what it means, whether we move forward, whether we understand the logic behind it.
Right, I understand that, but there's, Maureen put a lot of stuff out there, and this, what I'm, she, she's looking at history. And these documents are looking at going forward, but.
I have history that we still are over.
Well, will, will you listen, please, and I'll let you.
Well, you should save that also to Mer. You shouldn't just, I just picked me out, and, um, I'm a little tired of that.
Yeah.
So two thousand seventeen, we had problems with our lift station prematurely, and we looked at it. Um, it was caused by gases, uh, that were in there that corroded the, the sidewalls. So at that point, we looked at the interceptor, um, and we actually made some choices, or, or some, some things there. We, the, we, we took a look at a hundred feet of the interceptor each way. Did not look good. And, uh, so we increased the levels of, of the, uh, fluid in, in the interceptor, so there's less gases. And, um, in two thousand eighteen, I mean, we've been working at this a long time, as all that stuff out there would say we haven't. Two thousand eighteen, we hired, um, someone to look at our interceptor. We hired a firm, an independent engineering firm, O H M, had no connections with this. And they came, came back and gave us a report, um, basically said there are some weaknesses in the interceptor, and they need to be addressed. Now, this is back in two thousand nineteen. We applied for the SAW grant and got funded in twenty. That was a million-dollar grant that we received to, to look at our, our whole sanitary system. We took, let, after that, it was two and a half years. Uh, we inspected the whole system and came up with a, a design to fix it. We, uh, drained it, cleaned it, camered it, every line in our whole system. And we started that back in nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. We knew there was issues. Um, and we, we knew that we, we had to, uh, do a fix. So we went to work, uh, and we did receive another grant, another million dollars to fix the interceptor. And we're still seeking funding. Um, in the, in the twenty-two, in the last year, we applied for our Clearwater State Revolving Fund grant. Um, and if you remember, Maureen, the book was about that thick with all the things that we needed to do, that we, we did in the engineering and all that.
I remember.
Okay. And, uh, we voted to go ahead and, uh, and apply for that, which we haven't heard yet on that. Um, then again, in.
That was the camera that you sent through, right? The camera that you sent through everywhere and the results from the camera, right?
No, that's not for the, it was, it was grant to get it funded through low-interest loans and, and to get the repairs funded. The SAW grant was the camera and, and everything else. So then, um, back in June, this board, uh, uh, approved paying for the engineering to put the project out for bid this fall, which I'm hoping it will be, it'll go out to bid for in a month or two, to fix the whole system, not just the interceptor, it's the whole system. And, uh, you know, you, you don't do this in, in three, four months, even a year or two. We've been working on this for at least five, six years. We knew there was a problem. Um, some of the communications that, that you're seeing out there may have been directed at, it's directed at all three communities, but it's primarily pointed at one community. But to be fair, they got to give it to three. There's one community that has a little, little worse problem than we do. You were saying about the fines, um, or the violations from Eagle, all the violations. Well, I, I got the violation letter. There was eight or nine things here that they tested for, reported values, none. And they said, you said how Artie really wasn't too concerned about this. The violation that we received was in June of nineteen, and, and John could probably describe this better. They, you have to take X amount of solid tie, the wa, the wastewater treatment plant that comes in your plant. It's got to be eighty-five percent. Well, in June, we only took eighty-two point eight percent out. Why? Because we had so much river water and fresh water going in there, there wasn't enough solids to take out. So our only violation was our water was too clean to purify, if that makes sense. That was the only violation we received.
But they asked for a plan. They asked for a reply by December fifth, and the report showed that Ira Hiltonan did supply his response. Clay did not, but said, oh, we'll get it to you in a couple days. That happened on December fourth. We're supposed to have it on the fifth, and Algenac didn't come in at all. So, you know, we had over a month to put our reply together, and we didn't do it.
Who asked, who asked for the plan?
Eagle.
No, that's not true.
Well, I have a document.
St. Clair County D P W.
Well, this is why I wanted to go through my paperwork one at a time. I wanted to go through my paperwork one at a time, so you could answer it as we go.
Okay.
I know that you had Chris, I know that you had Chris Hiltonan come here to speak, because you guys knew I was going to talk about this.
I never spoke to Chris. I haven't spoken to Chris.
I didn't know he was coming.
Over a week.
Then I'm mistaken.
So I wanted to answer your accusation that we relayed to Eagle.
I cannot be interrupted, but.
Okay, go ahead. If you'd like an answer, I'll answer it.
When you are ready, I'm going to go through document by document, so all of you can go ahead and say your part, and then I'm going to say my part, and as we're doing it, then you can give the answers. The public has come to me and asked me to look into this. I've spent my money on the FOIAs, you know, several hundred dollars getting information back, putting this together. It was a big undertaking. So I did it for the people. They asked me to do it. I shared it with some of the people. And these are the concerns that they gave me to bring up, and that's what I'm going to do. So go ahead. You guys have your say, and then I'll have mine.
You go ahead.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go through, uh, page by page. The first one's a D P W letter of notice that they're not going to help us anymore.
Can we respond as you go through, or?
Uh-huh, yeah. How about if I just go through the paper that I sent, and then if you guys have. Sorry, Artie. I know it's going to take a while, but you know what? This, I don't know if anybody realizes this, but this is about us treating our wastewater and dumping it into the river, okay? This is not some small thing that I'm making a big deal about. I want to finish what I'm talking about first. Two point seven million gallons a day is what our treatment plant is supposed to have as capacity. That's about the size of four Olympic swimming pools that gets dumped into, um, you know, our, our channel every day, every day. So it gets treated first, it gets dumped in, but it's still wastewater that's being dumped, okay? If we go over, it's not going to be necessarily as clean as it should be, and we, we need to be concerned about that as a community. This board, that, you know, the three communities, Algenac, Clay, and Ira, that had to report in, they did not, they had the county telling them what to do, did not comply. And I disagree with Mr. Hiltonan about, they wanted it to go to zero infiltration. They wanted to take it down to three point five instead of two point seven in five years. They wanted to start from five. I, I have the plan right here. You're laughing at me. I have the plan right here. They didn't want it to go to zero. They wanted it to go to three point five, which is still over capacity. And that, I don't believe, was unreasonable. In five years, they were giving us five years to get there. The plan also talks about, um, expanding the wastewater treatment plant. And the county in these documents says there's no room for expansion. So that seems to be what eminent domain where that might come in. I also wonder if this is going to hook into the twenty-six-mile expansion corridor, and if that's why maybe we're looking at taking this over ourselves. But for me, maybe I'm not getting it, but from all the documents I've seen, it's going to be letting the foxes run the hen house, and I'm concerned, so. All right, so that's, I just want to preface it with that's why it's so important. And forgive me if it's going to take an extra twenty minutes to offer on this meeting. All right, so the, the meat of it is the letter, February fifteenth, twenty-two, which people have talked about. And, uh, it says, you're aware there are serious issues regarding infiltration. The flow is ceded design capacity. In the attempt to address these issues, a plan was put together, and it was verbally agreed upon. Initial response was then, when it came to signing it, they wanted to remove the section outlining the specifics of the plan. Therefore, they said they can no longer allow themselves to be exposed to these liabilities. Figure out your plan and take it over by August first, twenty-two. So here we are, over a year later. I think six months is a quick time to respond. But, you know, maybe we should have had two meetings a month instead of one meeting a month. Maybe we should have done more. But I do understand why this board's being pushed to make a decision, because we're way over deadline. Um, I wanted to be involved in these meetings from the start. I was told by Artie that they were closed, and I was not welcome. In my opinion, that's, um, unacceptable and concerning. I'm not going to read the letter. You guys may have seen it. If you want to see it, I can send it to you. All right, the second document is many pages showing concern about the wastewater treatment plant and what, and that it was urgent. I highlighted the concerns, um, and it says, "From this memo of December of twenty-one, the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant has continually exceeded capacity and could result in sanitary overflow violations and personal property damage to homeowners. It's not feasible to enlarge the plant's capacity." So I don't understand why there's so much verbiage in our water service agreement about enlarging the plant's capacity. Um, "The average flow has given a false impression that all is okay." This is what that memo says. "While the plant is capable of pumping more than its capacity by the treatment of waste, the treatment of the wastewater is going to be diminished. Does that mean that's going to pollute our water? A peak combined flow should not exceed thirty-five hundred, or thirty-five million gallons a day, which it clearly seems to be still doing, and I'll get to those later." Um, I talked about the memo on December fourth regarding the response. I mean, John, you were, you were in charge at this time, but you didn't have the response ready as they asked for.
That's not true.
Well, it says right in the memo. Let's read it.
Read it, would you?
Okay. December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Infiltration. Uh, the infiltration issues were discussed at length. Ira Township provided their proposed schedule and plan to address infiltration. Okay, now, in the original memo, uh, from November, they said they wanted a response by December fifth. This was December fourth.
Who was they?
Eagle.
Okay. Could you flip that back to your highlighted? Could you read that sentence?
Clay Township will have a plan ready to submit within the next day or two.
To who?
To the county.
The County D P W, not Eagle.
Eagle told the county they found, oh, let me get the Eagle out. Let me get the paper. I have to find the memo from December fourth. Well, I have to go to the violations to find it.
Take your time, Maureen. You got it.
There's a lot here, guys. I mean, see this stack? This is what I, I went through the.
Get it.
I've got all of our operation budgets and everything.
It wasn't to you.
Well, here it is. November fifth, two thousand nineteen. The following violations have occurred. Result. Please submit a written response to this office by December fifth. Please submit a written response to this office by December fifth, two thousand nineteen. And the first page says Eagle on it.
This letter is to Nick Cachara from the St. Clair County D P W Sewage Treatment Plant, and this is in regards to their violation where they didn't meet their eighty-five percent solids. That is totally a separate issue from the minutes from the St. Clair County D P W meeting with Ira, Clay, and Algenac in regards to a plan to reduce infiltration. Two separate events, two separate meetings, nothing to do with each other. That is in regards to a violation of the St. Clair County Sewage Treatment Plant.
Okay, please submit a response by December fifth. Right now, I'm getting all my papers. Let me get back to this paper.
Artie, can you take control, John? I don't think this is a discussion. Maureen is supposed to be talking.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Okay, I'll just shut up then.
It's okay. It's all right.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have information?
If I've got it, if I've got it confused.
Let, let Maureen figure it out.
My God, there's so many papers here.
You got the two confused.
Well, infiltration, that's about infiltration, and the other one's about the violation. The importance of obtaining this information in order to respond to Eagle's violation was stressed. So it may be two different, um, situations, but right there, it says the importance of obtaining this information in order to respond to Eagle's violation was stressed, so it's, it's got to be.
No.
All right.
Totally two separate issues.
One was communicated from Eagle, the other one was from the county.
About two separate issues.
About two separate issues.
One was about a violation of a permitted county, which Clay, Algenac, and Ira had nothing to do with. And the other ones was, was in regards to infiltration.
How can Clay, Algenac, and Ira not have anything to do with it when it's about their?
Because, because those three communities pay Nick Cachara and his department to run the plant, take the samples, follow the monthly protocol, and that's what that violation was in regards to.
Okay. All right, well, then I, I take it back.
Can I respond to some other statements you just made?
No.
Well.
So.
No, go ahead. As I, I'm through that one page, so go ahead.
So the sewage treatment plant has never had a violation for discharge into the river, a Rossuage, never, zero.
I know, not for Rossuage, I know.
Um, I'm not sure where the three, three point five million gallon a day number comes from, but I believe that's inaccurate also.
Give her a minute.
Thirty-five hundred gallons.
Right here, from, um, I am Roy. A peak combined flow during the wet weather event should not exceed thirty-five hundred gallons per minute.
Thirty-five hundred gallons per minute.
This is the maximum we can plant.
Not three point five million per day.
Thirty-five hundred a minute.
Right.
And below is the mitigation goal schedule. In twenty, two thousand twenty-two, the maximum miles, millions gallons a day is five, and it goes down in twenty-twenty-six to three point four. So I think it's, um, it's not, we're not asking it to go to zero. That's still above our capacity. But just to make sure during a rain event, we're not going over, especially when we keep hooking up more and more new homes to our system when I think we have a continued overflow, overload. All right.
So, so our, our M G D capacity at the plant currently is two point seven million gallons a day.
Right.
Today, we flow one point seven million through the plant, and that's the average for many, many quarters.
Okay, so we want to switch to that?
Let me finish. Can I finish?
Okay.
So what you have to keep in mind, it's very important, is this period of time that you're talking about, two thousand twenty to approximately two thousand twenty-two, we were in the highest water that we've ever seen. we were in the highest water that we've ever seen in the history of keeping track of water levels. Okay? Ira Township, Algenack, and Clay Township sewer systems were essentially underwater.
At '22.
Okay, so 2021. And that's the time period that you're talking about. That's what raised all these alarms with the county and everybody involved. Trust me, if I could have walked away, I would have at the time. It was terrible. There was nothing we could do. We, all three communities busted their butt through this period, tried to identify the sources and alleviate what they could. But I can tell you to stop this flow from that, to that plant, from going over capacity would have been impossible. That was a once-in-I-don't-even-know-how-many-year event. And right now, as we speak, that plant is humming along at 1.7 million gallons a day.
Okay, August 15th, 3.3295 million gallons a day. August 23rd, 3.5. August 24th, 3.9. August 25th, 5.9. August 26th, 3.48. In April, we were, you know, up to 5.8, 3.6, 4.1, 5, 3.7, 3.4, 2.9, 3.6, 3.1. In March, we were over. I mean, in '22, we looked pretty good. I had to foil this to get, so I figured that's what I was going to hear, that we're fine now. But we're still going over capacity.
No, 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 I didn't say we're fine now.
Well, we're still going over capacity. We're still hooking up new permits to this system. And I think we need to be concerned about the authority not providing information. I would like to see something in there that provides information to the community. The community never heard any of this until we looked into it ourselves.
Well, I'll dispute that too because we actually sent a letter out to every sewer user in Clay Township during this time period. We asked them for their help. We told them what we were trying to accomplish. So every sewer customer in Clay Township was fully aware? Were you on the board at that time?
You asked them for help, but did you tell them?
Oh, yes, we did tell them.
Did you tell them? Let me read some more. Let me read some more.
So were you on the board at that time, Maureen?
I started in '20.
In '20? So you weren't aware of any of this?
I did not see some of the stuff that I'm going to read next.
Wow. We discussed it at the board meetings. I know that.
I'll go to the next one. So the next one, we're just going to skip the violations because, you know...
Because of clean water.
A violation noticed from Eagle was received for wastewater treatment plant. It says on November 13th, 2019. Proposed schedule to identify and correct the problem and a description of actions to prevent these incidents from reoccurring that they asked for. That was the December 5th one we talked about. All right. So let's put the violations away. The next one's the warnings regarding the wastewater treatment plant. So in these attachments, there's more proof that the three communities were continually notified. June 16th, VPW says, "It's imperative that we communicate the urgencies of the infiltration issues. The plant cannot continue to process the excess overflow. The continued high flows will cost money, create backup, and may be discharged, may cause a discharge, untreated sewage." We've told you multiple times. March 18th of '20, 12:04 of '19, 11:02 of '19, 3:20 of '19, 6:20 of '18, February 15th of '18, follow-up letters in December of '19, 11:20 of '19, 11:13 of '19, and 5:13 of '19. Much more needs to be done, and this should be your highest priority." So I guess some of this was before me because the only one is March 18th, 2020, when I was here. On September 29th, there was a letter to you and Artie. There is an erroneous belief that the average flows are within capacity and compliance. They are not. An inclusive report submitted on September 29th, the superintendent says, "The plant flows were nearly three times design capacity. On January 12th, the plant was in the most critical state he had ever seen in his 12-year career. We're literally one pump or equipment failure from catastrophic failure. There is zero capacity available."
Who else does that letter go to?
Then he goes on to say, "The infiltration nearly caused another solids permit violation." Another. Let me see. The letter says it went to all three. It went to Clay Board, Ira Board, and Algenack.
Not just Artie and John.
Right. It went to everybody. You're right. So I mean, that, I don't think that's something the public saw. September 29th. So I mean, I just don't know that... Having each of the township's people run this...
Who else do you want to run it?
Well, I guess we need to come up with some, you know, some ideas of adding some reporting in there. The three of them could run it, but there should be some reporting so that we know what's going on.
There is in the contract where they have to submit reports to the clerk of each municipality.
So they're going to support it, supply it to the clerk, but not the board?
Well, it'd be the clerk's job to hand it out to each of the boards.
Well, I'd like to see that, that, you know, the board's going to get that information. So these were the questions I asked you. So...
You didn't ask me that.
No, no, I didn't ask you that. So in this agreement, you know, the most alarming problem was on page eight. "The authority can waive surcharges for specific quarters." That is a huge problem. And I know that you mentioned already that Algenack would not sign the, although they still have approved it, haven't without taking that, without putting that clause in. And you're saying that, you know, we are not going to allow that, that Clay and Ira is still going to make them pay. But how do we know that? How do we know that there's, I mean, who's going to tell us that they should be paying and that, you know, we're waiving it or not waiving it? That, again, should be something that should be disclosed to people.
The, you know, the authority that we're creating will have public meetings, and they'll all be public. So if anyone's interested, they can go to the meetings. They can address the board with these concerns.
Where did it say there's going to be public meetings in the agreement?
Right in the Articles and Incorporation.
All right. I've got it right here. Let's show it to me. Are they quarterly meetings or how often are meetings?
At least quarterly. They'll probably be monthly. But that'll be up for the board to decide.
So we're not, the county wanted us to adopt a reduction plan. And it's not in here. I know this is a 40-year agreement, but shouldn't we have some kind of a reduction plan in this agreement to make sure we address it?
We already submitted the reduction plans, all three communities. And this agreement has very stiff penalties if you go over your capacities.
That can be waived.
Well, it can be waived if all three communities agree to it. I doubt if Ira's going to agree to do it, or one or the other. One community cannot, can just say, "No, we're not waiving it." And it doesn't get waived. It's not a majority. You don't need to. You need unanimous. So there was a thought, well, what if we're all in the water again? We're all violating it. Are we all just going to fine ourselves or figure out how to solve the problem? And that's what that is about, that clause.
So is the reason that we have so much verbiage about enlarging the plant, do you know if there's plans for the sewer interceptor? Is that why we have plans with the sewer interceptor to go to 26-mile? I mean, are we going to see those plans before that happens? Because I mean, I'm just curious.
I have not seen any plans of a sewer interceptor going to 26-mile road or Palms Road. That's Chris's area. He could answer that better. I haven't seen any plans for that. And as far as expanding the current plant, there are things that can be done. Like, I think the first question's going to be asked of the authority is to put in a large tank to hold when we get these rain events to actually, as a buffer, to hold the water that we can treat it later after the rain stops. And there's a couple other things we can do to expand the capacity of the plant as it sits right now.
Is there a reason that it's 2023? We haven't done that since we've been getting stank since 2017? We're just looking at it now?
As I explained earlier, we started this project 2017 and '18. This project isn't easy. And it's definitely not easy to pay for it. And we still, we've been working on the funding for three, four years, and we're still not complete. I mean, sure, we could have pulled the trigger. Hey, let's just line it like OHM said. Boom. Okay, let's pay the users $8 million. We're fixed. But we're trying to get low-interest loans, loan forgiveness, and more grants. So maybe our bill's not going to be $8 million. Maybe it's going to be $3 million. And nothing's happened between now and then, you know, for us to go seek this money. And we're not done seeking money for it.
Well, it's been six years, and we still have overflows.
And we know that there is an issue, but they've been dealt with.
So that plant's been there since 1983? Is that what it was?
67.
There was overflows in that plant from day one in rain events, from day one. It's always been that way.
It's been, well, I think since 67.
Okay, since 67. You cannot engineer a plant for giant overflow events. Those are things you have to, and that's what Artie's talking about. It's actually called a, it's called a wet weather retention basin. And the reason we haven't done anything with it is you're probably looking at millions of dollars to do it. So that's where Grantley comes in and helps with the situation.
And you talked about a big tank. Is that what you mean?
Yeah. It basically takes the spikes off your flows and allows the plant to catch up before the next batch comes in.
And we're looking for funding to do that. Even before the authority's created, we're looking for it. But it'll be one of the first things the authority would probably, big things they're going to address.
And the other thing, Maureen, is all these infiltration problems that you're discussing, and I'm not disputing some of these, but they're there whether the authority is there, or the county runs it, or whoever runs it. Those problems are still there. You don't, you can't get rid of them unless you, you know... It's not like the county was the magic entity that had all the answers. Because essentially, we were just paying them to run that plant. Clay, Algenack, Ira made the decisions with the county's blessing. That's how it worked.
Well, we reduced substantially, right, Artie? That's what I was told. We reduced our...
Tremendously.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
We did, but...
There was still a lot of work into that. I tell you, the guy right there and John, both of them, the whole water department busted their butt. I mean, we had roads underwater. We were pumping roads out. We were going into people's houses, looking at...
Crawling underhouses.
Crawling underhouses. How many houses did you crawl under, Lance? Countless.
I lost track. And I can vouch that Ira Township went through the same thing because I worked with those guys on a daily basis. And it was massive.
And Ira did the same thing. We sealed every manhole watertight, bolted them down.
But Algenack, it doesn't look like they've been doing it.
I can't answer for Algenack.
I know, but we're allowing them to tell us how we're, you know, what the verbiage is going to be in our agreement when they're the biggest violator.
These agreements, if anybody, Clay, Ira, and Algenack are over the capacity, which Algenack is currently, they will have to pay a substantial amount of money every month.
So I did some rough math. And based on the last quarterly flows, the city of Algenack would have paid approximately $10,000 in penalty fees in one month.
Yeah, I got the number 7,500, 7,600, something, $10,000. But again, it can be waived. And $10,000 for kind of a big community doesn't seem extreme when you're looking at what could end up in our waterways.
The reason that clause, again, is in there, if we're all three underwater, are we all going to fine ourselves instead of taking that money and using it to fix the problem? And all three of us would have to agree to waive it. If one community says, "No, I don't want to," it doesn't get waived.
That's all I've got to say.
That's it? John, do you want to add anything?
I think I covered most of it.
Who would you want, if you don't want an authority to run the plant, who do you want to run it?
I want more reporting to get to the board and the people. I know, I don't think Cindy gives us everything, all communication about everything. And, you know, this is something I'd like to see in the agreement, that everyone on the board is going to know what the daily flows are.
We could make a mandate that the clerk gets forwarded this information that goes into our board packets. We could make a mandate. I have no problem with that. So you've been talking about history. These contracts are future going forward, and they have teeth to... If there's someone that's over capacity, there's teeth for them to correct the situation. We had a very good attorney. That's all he does is utilities, draw these documents up. Ira's attorney blessed it. Our attorney reviewed it and blessed it. I know the county has. They reviewed it. They haven't approved it yet until after we do. And I believe Algenack's attorneys approved it. They're hearing it tomorrow night.
Do you believe it's normal for this type of a board to have eminent domain?
Any authority has the power of eminent domain.
Well, that was a question from the public.
Yeah, well, any, you know, and who knows? What if we need a larger footprint for the plant? Plant's sitting in Algenack right now. Maybe we, you know, at some point in time, they may have to buy a property. I wouldn't want to tie their hands so they couldn't.
Can we get to vote on it before they do? Or is it just to go ahead and go with the authority?
This is a township board authority. That's why we're elected.
The public would not vote on it, I guess. That's why I say the transparency is so important. And also transparency about compensation. I'd like to make sure that's out there. Transparency on voting for who's going to be the actual board member, who's going to be the alternate.
That's for each individual board to decide.
For the authorities, are there job descriptions or any...
Sorry, it's not public. This is not public on this time.
So, do we have a motion? Getting back to it. Ouch.
I motion to approve the draft agreement and articles of incorporation.
Okay.
Christie supported it.
We have motion and support for the Articles and Incorporation. Is there any more discussion on the Articles and Incorporation?
I want to get back to the board meetings with the authority. It says quarterly. If I'm reading that right.
Yeah.
Change that to monthly. I was just questioning the board meeting that outlined as quarterly. And I think Artie said something about... And I think Artie said something about monthly, for monthly?
It's going to be up to the authority. They have to meet at least quarterly. In the beginning, it's probably, you know, they probably won't meet monthly, but as time goes on. We don't meet, we meet quarterly right now with the county. We don't meet more than quarterly with all this stuff going on.
Maybe they could report monthly and have a meeting quarterly, report on any...
And we still have the same people running the plant who supplies those reports every month.
Okay, thank you.
So anything else on the Articles of Incorporation? As we, if we change any verbiage, then we have to tell Ira they have to go back and reapprove it. I mean, this is why I sent this, these documents to the past two, three months. Because if we make any changes, they all have to, everybody has to reapprove it. Any more discussion on the Articles of Incorporation? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call vote. Christie?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Mark, yes. Maureen?
No.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
So the authority's in effect now?
We're working on it.
Algenack has to approve.
And then the county. Okay, we have the employee leasing agreement.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the employee leasing agreement 2023.08.30.
Support. Okay, we have a motion for the employee leasing agreement with the county. Any more discussion?
Saying people running it now, right?
Yep. We're, basically, we're going to, the county, they're going to be working for the county until we can, at a later date, move them into the authority. Roll call vote. Starts with me. Artie, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Maureen? I mean, Christie?
Yes, I get to vote twice.
Yeah. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the service agreement.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the 2023.08.30 service agreement.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support for the service agreement. And this is basically functioning how the authority's going to be working for each of the municipalities. So any more, any discussion on this?
They do not set rates.
They do not set rates. The authority will set a rate that charges each of the municipalities. And the municipalities set the rates for their own customers. So...
We've already set and agreed to the rates for this year.
Yes.
That's done.
Yes. There's one question is, well, is the authority going to run it cheaper than the county did? I don't know. You know, the county's going to have to, or the authority's going to have to hire a county firm to do the monthly statements, the billings, and the payroll and things. That's unknown. We have to go and get insurance, our liability insurance, our benefits for the employees. So that's unknown, but it's going to be pretty darn close. PFM, we did the rate study. Didn't seem to think that was going to be an issue. We hired an outside company from Ann Arbor Auditors that do this stuff every day to do an audit on how things is now and what they think the authority, if there's going to be any big added expenses to this. And it came back, like Chris mentioned, that no, negative, that they're charging us enough right now, how it's set up. So...
I've got budgets, so we've got the history on.
Yep, we have budgets.
And then I had talked about on page four of 34, under D, I still think that's kind of a contradictory line. It says regarding the sale or transfer of capacity rights, subject to prior written consent, you have to sell it. And then it says without the consent of all, they can allocate capacity to another. So... You said, I believe, it was referring to at the present time?
Right. At the present time, we could sell our capacity to Ira. Just do it. But under the authority, the authority's going to have to agree on any deals made for capacity expansions or anything like that from the municipalities.
Not really what it says in the agreement, though, because it says both things. Subject to prior written consent by the authority.
Yes.
Any municipality may sell, transfer, lease without the consent.
That's what it says. We need prior written consent from the authority to sell capacity.
And then on page five of 34, I still, I mean, I know we can't change any of this verbiage, but I do not like the fact that it says the capacity is approximately 2.7. I mean, that's what it is. Is that, you know, that it can be whittled around.
Well, if we put in a big tank, then the capacity's going to be more. This is a 40-year agreement, not an agreement that's going to be here just for this year or next year. Things are going to change.
Well, it's a service agreement. I mean, I guess if the capacity changes, the service agreement probably is going to change. You know, if you enlarge it, I would imagine. They're going to put together a new service agreement, so...
Okay, any more discussion on the service agreement? Hearing none. Roll call. Mark?
Yes.
Maureen?
No.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the transfer agreements. And that's for the agreement where the county will transfer all the assets for the plant to the authority itself. All the equipment, tools, everything.
Who's going to be in charge of that?
It's going to be the authority.
Who is that?
All three.
Who's going to label each wrench?
Their staff is. They have, in the back, we have a very, a big inventory.
All the titles and everything.
Same guy's on there right now.
Yeah.
All the titles and everything are in there for everything.
We got the inventory of all the equipment in agreement.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the 2023.08.30 transfer agreement.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Maureen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Artie? Yes. Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next, I know Algenack's going to hear this, I believe, tomorrow night. And then it will go up to the County Board of Commissioners. So... Next on the agenda is Harson's Island Wastewater Treatment Plant, permit, or engineer, funding for the engineering for the, getting both Eagle permits that's required.
Did you skip the capacity language or...
Capacity language is what I wrote summarizing.
Oh, okay.
So to get the permits for the discharge of MPDES permit application, the Eagle wetland permit application for the site, permit drawings, cross-section boundary surveys, and topographical surveys, the permit application, wetland mitigation sites. And that will include site maps, aerials, preliminary site investigation. Then ASTI examine the sites and determine suitability, estimates to restore or create, and then to refine the statements or refine the treatment process, design, layout, and estimate. Really entails two permits, and lots of work to get it. It's a total of $41,375. And you see the scope that's there. And like I say, this will be paid for through the, by the award that we received in the state budget, the $2 million. I think they estimated it to be a lot more than this with what we submitted for the grant, so...
Didn't we only put $30,000 in there? We've transferred over? How much did we transfer over?
We transferred $30,000 just for September. And mid-October, we're going to get $2 million. This will not, these bills will not come in the next month or two.
Okay. What's the MPDES permit? Is that the discharge? What's that?
That's the discharge for the plant.
Does that go into the river?
Yes.
I'm very surprised that, you know, I thought this was green and was not going to go into the river. Nobody on the island can get a discharge into the lake, can we?
Well, isn't it treated before it goes in?
It is treated to certain specs, specs, and goes into the river.
That was another permit's cleansed.
I mean, I thought, you know, you weren't here at the town hall, were you?
I couldn't stay.
Where they, they went through it, all the drawings and everything. Okay, so anyhow, we got an estimate for the $41,375 for, so they can start on these permits, which we need to start like tomorrow. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Board, to approve the Harson's Island Wastewater Treatment Plant Permit Engineering for $41,375 out of $597.807 for the Harson's Island Wastewater Treatment Plant.
We have support. Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
We've already paid them a considerable amount of money already to do some of this stuff on the inception stage.
Yes, we have.
And now we see another one, $41,000. So I don't know who's monitoring the situation, but PCA hands their hands in our pocket every day.
We have to get permits through Eagle, and to do that, we're looking at wetland mitigation. And that's quite time, it takes a lot of time and work to do that, and studies.
Well, we had a study, a preview, a review to do this, and it went on and on and on to $10,000.
Yeah, the 9,100, didn't that include the wetlands identification?
That was just identification, but now they have to do a lot more work and research on it. It's broke down.
I was just making a point.
Yeah, the 2,900 says site maps, aerials, preliminary site investigation. So we've already got the site maps and aerials. Maybe we're paying for those twice. I don't know.
Maybe get it itemized.
It is itemized.
Okay. The permits loan are just like under $50,000?
So, we, is there any more discussion?
No, I guess not.
When will we know the results of the wetland mitigation site?
Well, we're looking at sites right now. They put a little caveat that it had to, the mitigation had to take place on Harson's Island. I'm actually talking to them, see if they allow us to do it on the mainland because I have a lot more, better piece of property that I think they would like better and it would be less expensive.
Is there a way to hold off on some of this until we get that part of it done? I know that the NPDES discharge permit you said could take six to eight months.
Yeah, we need to start on that like yesterday because we can't design the plan until we get that permit. And part of this process is selecting these sites and, as it says in the scope, and see if they're going to work. I mean, we've got to bring in environmentals. It's time-consuming. Believe me, it's frustrating. I know all too well. We, we're looking at doing habitat restoration, which takes about 10 acres. We have three sites ID. I've talked to Six Rivers Conservatory. And they're giving me guestimates on how much that would take because you've got to go in and treat the frags. That's not, not the big deal. But then you're required to come in and do plantings, wetland grasses and things, and monitor it. It's just, Eagle makes it very cumbersome.
So, I mean, it seems to me they've already given us $2 million, so... If we can't find another place or whatever, they're going to accept it one way or another, right? I mean, otherwise, what are we going to do with $2 million? Give it back?
Yeah.
Well, then maybe we should just approve the $39.50 and wait on the rest until...
It's imperative we have a site location and we can move forward with it.
Well, we don't have a site, but we don't...
We, we don't have it approved by Eagle. They said we can build it there, but we have to go through the process. And they want us to extinguish all the different possibilities before we even move to a site on the mainland. We looked at five, six, we're looking at five, we want to look at five or six sites to see if any of them would work. To do that, we have to do studies.
As far as trading, the trade, trade-off?
If they'll even accept it. And we're going to use our environmentalist, ASTI. She has a pretty good handle on what they will look at and accept and what they won't. I shot like three, three pieces of property, no, that won't work. That won't work. That won't work.
I keep going back to, I mean, if they were going to do this for the septic water treatment plant, they might have done it for a septic field. That would have been so much less expensive, wouldn't it? I mean...
Probably it was. It was denied.
Right, well...
Henceforth, and we went to work and found this process.
But if we would have done all these processes, we probably could have gotten approved for the septic field and not spent $4 million of the taxpayers' money. Isn't that right or no?
I disagree. Do you want to, do you want to scrap the whole LG Wheel plant and go for, try to get a septic field? Good luck, because you, you won't be successful.
Just seems like a lot of money.
It is. It's a lot of work. So we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Are there any assurances that if we don't get one of our permits approved, can we still apply for reimbursement from the state out of the $2 million award from Hertel's office or wherever that's coming from? Like, would we be able to reimburse our cost to date?
Yes. And we...
But we're not gambling.
Right, we're not gambling, and this will be taken care of through the grant.
And then we're not gambling.
Now, I've had discussions, and Eagle does not want us to buy credits, wetland credits. But if we did, it would cost $182,000 to buy wetland credits so we can use that property. And I made, I was talking to three or four of our state legislators about that. And I said, you know, it doesn't make sense for me, to me, that we're taking money that the state's given us for this project, for this specific project... and turn around and give it back to the state for wetland delineation when it's meant for this project. And they all agreed. And they basically said, but we, before we can even have that conversation, we have to exhaust all our options as far as doing the mitigation. And that's what this quote we will cover.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the Harson's Island Wastewater Treatment Plant to permit engineering in the amount of $41,375, coming from...
Motion.
Oh, we already do?
Yeah, we got, we have motion and support, right?
Right.
Okay, we're just discussing, so.
Sorry about that.
Any more discussion? I'll do a roll call. Maureen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we have another proposal for Project Control. We received this $584,000 Spark Grant. And unfortunately, the bid requirements fall under the Davis-Bacon Act and the federal act, and it's just too complicated for me to assemble a bid packet and put out to bid per the guidelines in accepting this grant. So I did ask partners and architect several times, actually, for a quote to do the, to manage the bid packet and to manage the project for us. They did, they failed to give me a quote, not sure why. But within the grant, the grant allows for a 10% engineering. So the grant is actually going to cover $58,000 of engineering costs to put this out for bid and to manage the project. We got a quote with a scope from Project Control of $20,700 to draw up the bid documents, do the scope of work, prepare all the drawings, prepare the soil erosion drawings and permit applications, all you see in front of you, and contract administration, bid awards and signing it, establish for the construction layout, establish baseline and benchmarks, stake oil, soil erosion curves, et cetera, et cetera, to get that done. So. I'm looking for a motion to get our playground project underway.
I'll make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec Spark Grant Engineering from PCE for $20,700 from line 208807.
I'll support it.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
I say yes, too, you didn't give me.
Did I start with you? Okay, Maureen, you supported it. All right, Parks and Rec, Collin Road Lift Station Fence. And truthfully, I'd like to, that we postpone it. I'm actually getting a couple more quotes. And I was going to see if we can do it cheaper within our water department.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Support.
Okay, I have motion that we postpone this so we get more information. And support it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have Marine firefighting class at George would like to attend. And the cost is $225.40. As for a two-night stay, it's a two-day class.
You said George, or who?
George.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department request for a Marine firefighting convention at $225.40, coming from line item 206-960.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Sounds like a good class Marine firefighting for land-based firefighters.
Yeah, that's in the scheme.
Okay, any more discussion?
Taking fire truck up to Muskegon?
Yeah. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Fire Prevention Materials, costs $1,855. This pays for all the materials we go into the schools and teach them how to protect themselves from fire, and what to do and what not to do. I think we've been paying the same for that for years, haven't we?
Yeah, they've been giving us a pretty good deal on it.
Yeah, yeah, it's always been under $2,000. So, and with that, for second grade?
It's for Millside Elementary.
Yeah.
And then some of the first graders at the middle school. And then we go to the daycare center at Point Trumbull.
Okay, great.
And then we have a little bit left over that we pass out throughout the year.
Yeah.
Tours and...
All right, any entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Prevention Material for $1,855, taken from line item 206-000-956-00.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? I think it's a great program. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our second pickup, a Skid Sprayer. George, you want to talk about that a little bit, or?
Yeah, this is a unit that'll go in the back of our, one of our pickup trucks that we had just purchased, and it will be based over here on the island. It's for, if we get a grass fire, or if we get a small fire, we can respond that instead of taking the engine and putting the fire out.
Goes over little bridges, too?
Yes.
You've used something similar to this before?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Skid Sprayer for $3,976.93 and $656.94 for shipping out of line item 206-000-970-00.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
Chief, is this the one you want?
Yes.
It's got to be this one. I mean, I don't see a competitive, so I assume you know exactly what you want on this one?
Yes.
It's just the same as we have.
We purchased one here, oh, about four months ago, five months ago.
Same manufacturer?
Pardon?
Same manufacturer?
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense for training, keep it the same.
I knew you had a reason.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Board member comments? John, do you have any comments? You're good? Maureen?
Just wanted to say, if anybody has any questions, you know, we're always here to help. And I did receive more correspondence from the Klingenberg's. That's someone who mentioned in public comments. She gave me a list of the ordinances, and so I'll be getting with Artie and talking to her, to him about, you know, what ordinances she insists that we're not following, and make sure she's satisfied. That's about it. Thanks for coming.
You? Mark?
Okay, we had a lot of dialogue about the authority. Hopefully, we had some of it cleared up. I'm probably still have some questions going down the road at some point in time. But again, after what Maureen said, we're always here to help. So reach out and ask a question. If we don't know the answer, we'll find it. We'll all find it. Thank you very much.
You? Chris?
Yeah, it's, it's starting to be a busy fall, right? So you nature walkers, be careful, right? Grouse opened up, squirrels opened up, wild turkeys going on, woodcock, they're shooting geese, ducks. So just, if you're nature walking, be careful. Chris Holcomb, you had mentioned, is it a chili cook-off?
Yes.
That's on October 14th, right here downtown? Right here, I'm more of an eating, the eating type. But I'd like to attend. From the high school perspective, we got girls volleyball tomorrow against Arvina. And we've got boys football against North Branch, both are home. Football Saturday at 7:00 p.m. That's all got.
Okay. Christie?
I just want to report that we had a successful and very busy tax day. If anyone has any questions, they can contact the office. But we had a very busy, successful day.
I saw the report where we were actually pretty darn busy between 7:30, 8:00 in the morning in the office. So it seems like that was a good move. And I'll just finish off. Thank you for coming, everybody. I actually do enjoy coming over here. I just wish the Lions would open up their bar when we're over here.
We'll open it up.
Yeah, we, we can, we can open, we'll turn the lights on. Okay, five minutes, three minutes. And we got a lot of positive stuff.
Why aren't all during this meeting? Are you sure about that?
We got a lot of positive stuff going on in the community, that's for sure. And we are here to solve problems. The sewer problem is not a new problem. And we have been working on it for at least five, six years, so. Watch out for school buses, and everyone be safe. Thank you. Motion and enjoy, thank you for coming.